School District Regular Board Meeting. May we all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, February 1st, and welcome to the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Regular Board Meeting. May we all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, February 1st, and welcome to the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Regular Board Meeting. May we all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And to top off your day.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Just go ahead and step right to the podium, so they can all hear you.
I thank you so much. I am so honored to be here tonight and grateful for the recognition of the Golden Apple, something that I never anticipated, and I feel so special. And I have such a wonderful group of friends that have supported me and a family all the way through. I have been with Wald Lake Schools for quite a few decades, about ten of them, and I am very proud to continue to represent them and be part of the district. I have been very fortunate to work with, right alongside, so many wonderful, creative, amazing, helpful colleagues, and to have a family at home that is also very supportive of my love of teaching. I put them to work many, many years doing things for me and continue to do it right now. So, I just want to thank Barb and Jenny and all my friends that are back there, Barb Morley and Blake Bernstein from Oakley Park where I've subbed for him too. They all mean so much and they've been so helpful to me. And my Golden Apple will be something that's a symbol for being able to do what I love to do, and I thank you for adding some fuel to my passion. Thank you.
We did have a second recognition tonight. Debbie Moore, also from Commerce Elementary, she's a custodian there. Debbie is recognized tonight not only for her hard work and her contributions to the commerce community, but also because she's willing to work extra shifts and do whatever it takes to keep the school clean and safe. And so she's not with us tonight because she's at the office. But my team and I will be by to Commerce to congratulate her and to thank her for what she does for our community. So, that's it, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll move into public commentary. Couple of little reminders, if you weren't here last month, on the wall, we have a new countdown timer. So, it's in plain view for anyone speaking, so they will have a good indicator of where they are in their topic time. Just if you're not aware or had not take notice, that the back of your card now has some new guidelines on it. Nothing earth-shattering, but just be aware that it's there. So, without any further ado, we will move to number one, Tim Sawmiller.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. I'm a cisgender male using pronouns he, him, and his. Before I begin, I would like to thank Shane Levin for holding a coffee hour last week. Mike Wise was also there, and the three of us had a candid and, I believe, fruitful discussion. And one other comment, I asked this board to reconsider that school bus purchase, if for no other reason but to have a public discussion that will inform parents and students as to why they don't deserve new buses. Since this is Black History Month, I'd like to consider the distorted view of our nation's racial history that persists in education and society at large. In 2018, a survey of high school students found that only 7% named slavery as the cause of the American Civil War. Reconstruction was a period of time where Black Americans began to assert great power, but was also a time of strong backlash against it. These are facts not commonly taught in most classes. The critics of critical race theory pervert that terminology in an attempt to ban Black American history, which is essentially the banning of American history. Critics like Moms for Liberty use the term CRT as a reason to stop the purchase of well-written and balanced history books, as happened here last year, and to accost schoolteachers and school boards to confront the teaching of accurate American history. Students must be taught historical truths before they leave high school. Perhaps then some of them will approach life with a more informed viewpoint. Students should experience discussions on the racial double standard. For instance, would the outcome be the same if Barack Obama had committed the same felonies as Donald Trump? Or would the outcome be the same if the crowd who stormed the Capitol on January 6th were Black? We can all make pretty good guesses as to those outcomes. Students need to be aware of racial bias in laws and legal institutions and the disparate rates of incarceration. The critics have determined those lessons to be CRT, and given a scary connotation that fits their agenda. Attacking the teaching of factual American history by derisively calling it CRT is actually a clear example of what CRT is: the exposure of systemic racism. Did you know that Florida, Texas, and California, the three biggest textbook customers, use the same publisher for history textbooks? However, the books in Florida and Texas are dumbed down when speaking about Black American history compared to the books used in California. Systemic racism at work. Another example is the Montgomery Bus Boycott. If they even study that, students learn about Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks, but do they learn about Mary Fair Burkes, or Joanne Robinson, or Bayard Rustin, or other important and influential Black figures of the time, or of any time? No, they don't. And why only in February? This is true history with its blemishes. Why would we tolerate the suppression of truth?
Wind up your comments. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And next up, Kathy Kubik.
Hi. I came here in December where you talk... Oh, what?
We had to reset the timer.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Technology got us.
I don't ever make it to three minutes, so it'd be a shock if I did. Does it start now?
I'll give you the high side.
Oh. I won't make it three minutes, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
I came here in December when you had a meeting on an icy day, and you were in a meeting for about fifteen minutes, and you talked about you're going to go for a bond. Well, I've been in the district for, this is my thirty-seventh year of living in the area, and you guys have had many, many bonds. And I never understand, because I worked for you and saw such waste, and saw that you got a school such in good shape, and then you'd tear it down. I didn't ever understand that. And then we also have the school that you tore down, the building. Mr. Bernia was not here when all this happened. We tore this wonderful building down in Wald Lake, and it just sits there, the property. What I've observed about the bonds is we just must have paid one off. So, there's a scramble to now replace one, is what I'm guessing. I could be wrong, because I'm just trying to get the facts. But we have a bond that we did in 2019 that won't be paid off till 2049. We have another one that is going to be paid off in 2050, then another one that's going to be paid off in 2043, and another one that's 2049, plus you have that thinking fund. So, we have a lot of bonds. So, I don't understand. You have put debt on children for, if they're graduating, they'll be paying for these for twenty or thirty years. So, I don't understand why you need more money. And I got these facts from your money person. I just, I don't understand it, and you're going to say, oh, but we need this, we need that. No, I also looked at the furniture you're buying for these places. When we had, when Twin Beach was going to be tore down, it closed, we had an auction, and cabinets that are over a thousand dollars that you're going to be buying, we sold for fifteen dollars at an auction. They're perfect condition, but they did. And tables went for five dollars that would cost a lot more money. So, this is what bothers me, is the waste I see. And I think that you should consider that you're putting this debt on the taxpayers. I have never seen anybody, at least Mr. Ziegler loves to say, will vote for the bond, because you were there, I was there that night, and he agreed to vote for the bond. It's like, do you ever think of the taxpayer and the people coming up? That's what I wanted to talk about, and that's not what makes education great. A pretty building, that doesn't entice a child to grow, and I don't think it does. I think it's a good teacher, good pairs, good people in the school, that want to teach them to yearn for education, to, I don't know, to have curiosity to learn. So, I just, and the hunger to learn. And I don't know, I can't stop you. I hope the taxpayers will stop you on this bond. I just wanted to give you my point of view. And try to teach patriotism. To me, patriotism is so important, love of country, that's something that is not taught enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, Nancy Van Leeuwen.
Did you get it fixed?
Okay, well, we had to kind of partake in scrapping our high technology here. We're going to go low technology.
Can I go? I'm here to speak in favor of item number nine on the agenda, the bond issue. I think bonds are a critical thing in this district. I have been here over fifty years as a resident and longer as an employee. And one of the things that helps in education is a facility that works, and furniture that works, and buildings that are up to code. And so, it is a critical thing. It's my understanding that this bond will not create more on the taxpayer at this point. But, oh, sorry, Mrs. Kubik. Bonds are something that we have relied on, and the Wald Lake community has been, and the education community has been wonderful in supporting our bonds. Our citizenry has been exemplary, I think, in seeing the need, understanding what happens. When you downsize, as we're having to do now, you don't just eliminate. You have to rebuild, restructure, reconfigure, and it's my understanding that that's what this bond will do. So, I, as a longtime resident and a member of the Wald Lake community, I certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Melissa Paul.
Rely on Mr. Ziegler.
Oh, is it not going to come up there?
Yeah, it's failed us today.
Okay. Do you know what happened one week before last board meeting? A principal in Iowa who risked his life to protect students during a school shooting was shot multiple times. Principal Dan Marburger was among three staff and four students who were injured January 4th when a student opened fire on the first day back after winter break in the small community of Perry, Iowa. The shooter also had with him an improvised explosive device. Sixth grader Amir, age eleven, was killed by three gunshot wounds. Amir, whose family knew him as Smiley, was a whirlwind of cheerful activity. He dashed out of his home that Thursday morning, eager to see his friends on the first day back. His mom, Erica, said he loved soccer, played the tuba, and sang in choir. He was so well-loved, and he loved everyone, she said. Do you know what happened three days after last month's board meeting? That beloved principal died after ten days in the hospital. In a statement from the Perry Community School District, "Dan was a tremendous leader in our school district, a loving husband, father, grandfather. Our school community is heartbroken by his death. For nearly three decades, Dan was ingrained in every aspect of our school district environment, and we are feeling the immense loss of a devoted and caring colleague. Governor Kim Reynolds ordered all flags in Iowa be lowered to half-staff that Sunday. Principal Marburger's daughter Claire said her father was known to be a gentle giant, an amazing dad and a person. He does anything for us kids, including driving seven hours round trip on school nights to catch my college games. Stayed long enough to slip me a twenty, tell me I played well, give me a hug, and head out," she said in a post. At the last Wald Lake Board meeting, the first thing I noticed were all the cars in the parking lot, all those teachers with their families getting their Teacher of the Year awards. What remarkable teachers this district has. The second thing I noticed when I walked in was the professional security officer you have to protect yourselves standing guard with gun holstered. What saddens me is that while you said how much you value these teachers receiving their awards, and all the Wald Lake teachers, the majority of this board and superintendent refuse to protect them like you protect yourselves with a security guard. The third thing I noticed at the last board meeting was the agenda. I looked to see what the next thing would be that you were going to vote on to continue using up last year's $1.4 million school security grant. And sure enough, I knew it would be something like this, more than $150,000 worth of classroom signs. You say you don't use grant money for hiring, but I can give you examples when you did exactly that during the past few years.
Thirty seconds.
Now you have another million-dollar school-plus school security grant for 2024. Protect what you say you value, and prioritize security guards in every school this year, so that what happened in Iowa does not have to happen here.
Thank you for your comments. Rodney Hopkins.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just trying to get clarification of the transportation policy that were revised in June of 2023. Me and my family moved to Wicksum three years ago, so we're still established and everything. But I have a son that goes to Wicksum Elementary, and he received a violation for a bus ticket for unauthorized use or get off or a stop, which was not the case. The case was, my wife had made arrangements with the school, and with transportation, said he would be picked up at a different stop, because we were out of town. And then unbeknownst to him, administrator of the school that afternoon called him to the office and says, oh, you need to get off at the stop you got picked up in the morning, and gave him a pass. He got back on the bus, stood as he toes, a young man, he's nine years old, he got off and stopped. The bus driver then notified my wife Monday that he would get a ticket, and we tried to explain that this was oversight because it was a mix-up with the administrator of the school, who for her own thought he was getting off. And he had a bus pass. Now, in the policy and the transportation says, in number fourteen, it says that any stops a student do needs to make arrangements with the school. And he had a bus pass, and I do have that. So, I'm just curious, what is the appeal process? I know they have an appeal process for suspension, but this is a letter of warning that he received for something that he had no control of. And we did talk to the bus transportation manager, and he was not, had no grace or mercy towards it. So, I'd just like to know, what can we do? So, my son felt like he did something wrong. He did not. We have the bus pass, whatever thing, and he did not intentionally do to violate the rules. So, thank you. That's all I want to know.
Thank you for your comments. And Ms. Corey Hensley.
Good evening, Cabinet members and Board of Education. My name is Corey Hensley, and I'm president of the Special Services Parent Advisory Committee here in Wald Lake. I've stood at this podium before, asking you to pay attention to the developments of the Adult Transitions Program. I am here again this evening, seeking your support to ensure that the ATP is a state-of-the-art program, drawing families into the district, and more importantly, that it is housed in a permanent location. You can begin this process by voting. "Oh, you need to get off at the stop you got picked up in the morning." And gave him a pass. He got back on the bus, stood as he toes, a young man, he's nine years old. He got off a stop. The bus driver then notified my wife Monday that he would get a ticket. And we tried to explain that this was oversight because it was a mix-up with the administrator of the school. No fault of her own, thought he was getting off. And he had a bus pass. Now, in the policy and the transportation says, in number 14, it says that any stops a student do needs to make arrangements with the school. And he had a bus pass and I do have that. So I'm just curious, what is the appeal process? I know they have a appeal process for suspension, but this is a letter of warning that he received for something that he had no control of. And we did talk to the bus transportation manager and he was not, had no grace or mercy towards it. So I'd just like to know, what can we do? So my son felt like he did something wrong. He did not. We have the bus pass and everything and he did not intentionally do to violate the rules. So thank you, that's all I want to know.
Thank you for your comments. And Ms. Corey Hensley.
Good evening, Cabinet members and Board of Education. My name is Corey Hensley and I'm president of the Special Services Parent Advisory Committee here in Wald Lake. I've stood at this podium before asking you to pay attention to the developments of the Adult Transitions Program. I am here again this evening seeking your support to ensure that the ATP is a state-of-the-art program, drawing families into the district, and more importantly, that it is housed in a permanent location. You can begin this process by voting to approve the school improvement bond proposition. If approved, the Citizens Committee for Campaigning, which is comprised of parents, including hopefully myself, can begin talking about and promoting the bond to be voted on at a special election, which will be held on May 7th, 2024. This bond, my understanding, is not expected also to raise taxes for residents. Not only that, we can begin our work with Dr. Bernia to determine future needs of the ATP program and conceptualize a final program location. We don't want to delay any further the work that should have started with the 2019 bond. So again, please show your support for the ATP and right or wrong by voting yes on Agenda Number Nine when presented this evening by Board President Peterson. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that concludes all of our public commentary tonight. And we'll move to administrative commentary and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
We'll start tonight to my right with Dr. Lons.
Nothing to say. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Skowinski.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bernia. I just wanted to report to the board and to the public that yesterday we had a very successful professional development afternoon with all of our teachers, pre-K through 12. So we had a variety of offerings around the district for them. I know that the high school was specifically looking at some climate and culture work within their buildings, talking about building relationships with students and the importance of that, the importance of them feeling like they have a trusted adult that they can go to in their buildings. I know at middle school, we talked a lot about the neuroscience and brain research around teaching and learning. And at the elementary, there were a variety of offerings for them in choice sessions. So got great feedback yesterday from our professional learning sessions. And I'm very thankful to folks from within our district and our staff that presented, that supported that work. I also wanted to say that each year since the pandemic, I had been scheduled to report to the board in February of each year regarding some data. I have been in touch with Dr. Bernia and we have that scheduled for March 7th. The law did change last summer and so we weren't required to report in February. But I will be preparing a very specific report on data for the board on March 7th. So I look forward to doing that.
Ms. Muir.
Nothing today, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Just wanted to report, I had an opportunity to visit our construction sites today and things are progressing nicely. The team buildings are well underway. The central team building is enclosed with walls going up. The northern team building is covered with flooring having been poured this week. Western's a little bit behind, of course, because they got a late start. But those facilities are shaping up nicely. And toured Western High School's addition today and it is coming along amazingly well. Things, they're as far along in some areas as tile in the restrooms, paint, ceilings going in. So looking forward to in the near future, hopefully being able to schedule a preliminary visit for those who would be interested.
Mr. Russo.
Nothing this evening, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Omer.
Nothing this evening, Dr. Bernia.
For me this evening, I, since we've come back from the start of 2024, you know, today or yesterday felt a little bit like January 87th. Just, you know, it was a long month. And so I wanted to take my time tonight to compliment the cabinet. They're up early, they stay up late and we've been working a lot to analyze the impact of legislation, to plan professional development, to respond to safety, security concerns, to meet with parents in the ATP program and otherwise, or to drive the roads very early in the morning or work on the budget. And so I just am so grateful to them for their hard work and very appreciative of that. And then I roll towards the board. Tonight's a big meeting for the Wald Lake Consolidated Schools Board of Education as you will consider two things that are massive steps with respect to the future of the district. And so I really do appreciate and want to say that I'm very proud of our board and the level of homework and thoughtfulness that have gone into both the bond proposal that you'll consider tonight, but also the strategic planning. And I'm very, 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 very proud of the time, the energy and the effort that you've put in and the careful consideration that you're making to the future of our district. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to board commentary and I will direct to Mrs. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I just wanted to let some folks know an update from the Policy Committee, who's been meeting diligently. And you'll see some of those things come before us today for a vote. But for those who may not notice, in some of our postings, that committee continues to meet at least a couple of times a month. And we're working our way through additional updates and things that are important. And so we'll keep at it and thank you for having that on the docket tonight.
Mrs. Casagrande.
Yep, just a few quick things. So the State of the State from Michigan, our governor spoke. And while we didn't hear a lot about education, I thought that Dr. Bernia's comments to the board were pretty valid. A couple of things that were mentioned. One thing we just want to look at is where that money is coming from. So just a reminder that people keep saying there's not a lot that might happen at the state because of the state house and the representatives in the Senate being a little bit in a lag and not having, you know, the same Democrat in both areas. So long and the short of it is, is that one thing we want to look at is where that money is coming from, whenever anything comes from education. And what I would like all of us to just be diligent about is looking at the state aid fund and seeing what's coming out and is that being used for K through 12? Or is that being used for something else? There's been billions of dollars that have been pulled out for other things. And that's just one thing we want to keep an eye on. Also, Northern's musical is this weekend. We all got a message from Northern. And I am planning to attend. But any of you who don't know, it's nice work if you can get it. So if you like Gershwin, good thing to go to. The construction site that Mr. Chatfield was mentioning, the different sites, and Dr. Bernia and I talked a little bit about this. I ran into Mr. Hopka at the MLK event. And he had said, hey, you know, you should come by and you should take a look at it. So you and I had kind of talked a little bit about maybe, you know, it might be nice if the board went and looked at Western and saw what it looked like. And then when it's finished, we'll see it again. But just kind of wanted to put out there that Mr. Hopka has put out an invitation for us to come see it. Thank you.
Mrs. Tice.
Yeah, so I think it's been really great the last few months just talking about the strategic planning and working towards beginning that. So just thank you, Dr. Bernia, for facilitating GND associates to come a couple of weeks ago and present to us. I know I couldn't be here in person, but I was able to catch their presentation, most of their presentation via the live stream. So just excited to get started working on that.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Very far away. I had a good week this week. I started my Monday morning meeting with Dr. Bernia at our Early Childhood Center. I was given a tour by Director Sarah Davy. And it's an amazing facility. If you have not been there, I highly recommend going. They have an open house coming up. It's more for prospective families than just curious residents, but I suppose anybody could go. It's a great facility and it's really great, the work that they're doing there, the thoughtfulness that's gone into planning that building. You know, every kid that we interacted with was happy to see us. Every staff member was engaged. Some didn't even acknowledge that we were in the room because they were so focused on the kids. And it was just a great thing to see, a great way to start the week. So, you know, very proud of that facility. And anybody who's in the local Wald Lake area this weekend, if you head to the actual lake, Wald Lake, you'll see a polar plunge happening that I'll be participating in as part of my day job. Unfortunately, we won't be jumping into the lake because there's no ice. But we'll be jumping into something cold. So I don't know, Deputy Giffen, I don't know if you're going to be there. Nope, she's not going to be there. But it'll be a lot of fun. So if you're in the area from like 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, stop by the actual lake at the tiki bar and you'll see some fun stuff going on. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler.
Piggybacking on what Mrs. Casagrande said, the state school aid fund, we do have to watch that. We are still losing a massive amount of money to the colleges and institutions of higher learning, which are charging tuitions and can make money, whereas public schools cannot. And maybe someday we'll be lucky enough to get some of the proceeds that we have lost back or a percentage of them to help finance public education.
And I'll throw a couple of comments in myself. Again, go back to MLK Day, horrible weather day, but it was very warm inside and we had a good turnout. And when I went to a couple of Unified Sports basketball games over the last week. If you haven't done one of these, please. I did Western last week, I think they played Belleville. And the rescheduled Central Western game last night at Central. Very, very fun. I encourage you to take that opportunity when and if it's presented to you. On the other side, I just want to kind of make a general comment as we move later into strategic planning and of course, the bond issue. I just want to kind of remind everybody, it's been kind of a long winding road here. So this started a year ago, January, when we initiated the first facility studies within the district to kind of get a health check on where we are and where we can be going. And that progressed throughout the year, culminating probably around November. But at that time, I think it was defined, the board had multiple meetings and that simultaneously, based on the Facilities Study Committee, which is one of the same, but not the same. That's an organization of individuals throughout the district that looked at the findings that Plant Moran provided the district over that period of time and looked at options going forward. So the bond was an outgrowth of that and so was the strategic planning. So they're kind of running simultaneously. They tend to sound a little confusing at times. Even I get a little tongue-tied on one versus the other. So right now, tonight, we'll talk a little bit more about where we're going with the strategic plan. And also, we'll try to maybe bring a little bit more to attention on the bond. The byproduct of how the bond came about is really based on that facility study. And the details that were provided to the board as initial recommendations. Point con, if we don't do a bond, this is what happens. If we do a bond, this is what happens. So we'll try to do more to elaborate on that, if not tonight, in the immediate future. And I have seen Dr. Bernia nodding his head with me. So we will do a very kind of bang-up job to try to get at that. So that being said, we'll move on to the consent agenda for tonight. In the consent agenda, our approval of minutes from a January 4th special meeting, January 11th special meeting minutes, January 11th regular meeting minutes, personnel recommendations on new hires, retirements, financial reports, disbursements in the amount of $19,188,149, balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures, unaudited and investments scheduled. And then purchases under $50,000. 2019 bond program furnishings for the high school team buildings, Western, Northern and Central, in the amount of $38,676.58. It's always interesting where we get the cents mark. That's from the 2019 bond. Head Start Directors Report. And so at this point, do I have a motion?
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So we'll move on to bid awards over $50,000. And I will bring in Dr. Bernia on that. I'll turn it over to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The first bid recommendation is for the purchase and installation of all the interior and exterior signage for the Western High School addition. We recommend awarding this project to Curb Appeal Concepts in the amount of $63,350. This purchase will be funded from the 2019 bond.
Mr. Peterson.
Do I have a motion? Mrs. Casagrande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the 2019 bond project's Western High School signage from the 2019 bond fund.
And do we have any discussion? I do. Actually, I'm going to put this together with A and A B. I asked Mr. Chatfield, do we have some feel for what the original bond estimates were for these program projects and where they have come in at this point, probably four years later?
Yeah, all of these, you know, we had an overall budget for the Western project. All of these projects fit, all of the Western awards fit within those budgets. We didn't have a specific line item for signage, but it was built into equipment and furnishings. And this purchase price fits well within that budget. In regards to the other projects, all of these projects are within the allotted either bond amount or sinking fund allotment that we had to work with. They all are within industry standards, which frankly, are a little higher these days than they were a couple of years ago. The Northern Turf Project, we're spending about $100,000 more than we did for each of the fields at Western and Central a couple of years ago, but that was expected. So budget-wise, they fit within what we expected those prices to be.
Any other comments? We'll move on, take a vote, please. And those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes 6-0.
Yes, I read it.
And we'll move on to item 8B, which is a 2019 bond project, district-wide upgrades E-rate. And that is from the 2019 bond fund. And do I have a motion?
I move that the, do you want me to do it? Is that okay? I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the 2019 bond project's district-wide network upgrades E-rate from the 2019 bond fund.
Do we have any comments? Discussion? I do. Mr. Chatfield, can you please explain to me? I do feel that this is in the electronic spectrum of something, but what is E-rate?
So the E-rate program is a federally funded program overseen by the FCC that assists schools in obtaining affordable broadband coverage for instructional purposes. That is the intent of it. We all pay for it with a surcharge on our cell phone bills. It, districts are eligible for refunds of between 20% and 90% of eligible broadband-related projects based on the poverty rate within the community. Wald Lake schools historically received rebates of 30% to 40%, which is what we are expecting with this project as well.
Right. Okay. Any other comments? We move to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And we'll move on to bid award 8C. Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. This recommendation is for the replacement of the stadium turf at Northern High School. We recommend awarding this project to AstroTurf Great Lakes in the amount of $561,625. And this project will be funded with sinking fund proceeds.
Do you have any comments? Mr. Siegler. Motion, oh, motion, thank you, sorry.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid for the 2024 athletic renovations for Northern High School turf from the sinking fund.
Support.
Do we have any comments?
Mr. Peterson.
Mrs. Casagrande.
So I was aware of this, but we did have some questions from board members. And just for transparency to the public, the question comes up sometimes is why are we, you know, doing just Northern and what about, you know, our other high schools? And so I can speak to this or Mr. Chatfield, if you want to speak to it, just to kind of let the public know that, I mean, we kind of are on a rotation and we do watch those, but you can probably say it better than I.
Certainly. The Wald Lake Northern Turf Field was originally installed in 2002 in conjunction with the construction of Northern High School. The fields at Central and Western were not installed until several years later. The lifespan, the original lifespan, the expected lifespan on these systems was eight to 10 years. The Northern Turf was replaced in 2011. in 2011. The fields at Western and Central were originally installed in 2008, replaced again in 2019. So we are now, we're wrapping up year 13 with the Northern Turf. It is in need of repair, of replacement. Many tears, many rips. It's the, the grass fibers have deteriorated. So it is in need of replacement now, but the fields at Western and Central are still in excellent condition. And we would expect those to be in need of replacement in, you know, another five to six-year timeframe.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Okay, we'll move forward, take a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Six zero. And we'll move on to item 8D, 2024 athletic renovations, Northern and Central High School tennis courts. This is via the sinking fund. Mr. Chatfield?
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. This recommendation is for the repair and resurfacing of the tennis courts at Central and Northern High Schools. We recommend awarding this project to laser striping and sport surfacing in the amount of $89,000 for Central, $82,900 for Northern, for a total amount of $171,900. And as mentioned, this will be a sinking fund project.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Mrs. Cosgranti.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the 2024 athletic renovations, Northern and Central High School tennis courts from the sinking fund.
Support.
Any, any comments? We'll move on, we'll take a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Six zero. And the last in this category is AD. It's asbestos abatement at Wall Lake Western High School, and it will be taken from the 2019 bond fund. Mr. Chatfield?
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. This recommendation is for the asbestos removal and abatement work at Western High School to prepare for the demolition and renovation work that is scheduled for this summer. We recommend awarding this project to Quality Environmental Services in the amount of $355,000. This will be a 2019 bond fund project.
Ms. Levin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for asbestos abatement at Wall Lake Western High School from the 2019 bond fund.
Support.
Do we have any comments? I do. So, Mr. Chatfield, is this covering all the potential asbestos that might be or has been uncovered in the Western facility?
Yes, in, in the areas where we are doing work this summer. So the summer's projects involve the demolition of the A, B, and C wings, renovation to the D and G wings, and any asbestos-containing materials in those spaces. Well, in the demolition areas, they have to be removed entirely before we demolish the building and dispose of it. And in the renovated areas, they either have to be removed and demolished or frankly repaired to a point where they're not going to become friable and cause air contamination.
Do we have any other comments? Take a vote, please. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Six zero. And we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Resolution, Approval of School Improvement Bond Proposition. And I will turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you mentioned during your commentary, this has been a long process and a long time coming. I want to again compliment the board, as I said in my commentary, about the thorough homework that you've done to get to this point. Our application was approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury, and so you have my recommendation to call for a special election on May 7, 2024.
Mr. Seigler?
I move that the Board of Education approve the school improvement bond proposition for a special election on May 7, 2024.
Support.
Do we have any comments? Mrs. Levin?
So I apologize in advance, but my comments tonight will be long. I believe that I owe it to the community to not just vote, but to explain my vote and my process at arriving at my decision. Before anybody goes crazy, I'll be voting yes. I couldn't vote tonight without making sure that I did my homework. I have looked at this from a lot of angles and I want to share what I have found. But before I jump into that, I want to thank Dr. Bernia and his team for all of the work that they've done and the questions that they've answered and the questions they've answered from the questions that they've answered. So thank you all very much for the time that you've put into this. So first, I was initially concerned in our board discussions months ago about the amount of the bond that was being requested. Whether you look at it as a number of mils, 4.05, or a number of dollars, you know, over $200 million, I wanted to understand the bottom line implications for a household. Everything is expensive these days, and I understand asking people to pay for anything is a big responsibility of our board and one that I don't take lightly. To be sure, I have recognized the need for a bond since the board started hearing about this a while ago. So the option to do nothing and have the mils roll back to 2.7 or 2.5, to me, really wasn't an option. We need capital funds to keep our large district and our many buildings in good working order. So then it was a matter of exactly how much we ask for. As a board, we explored some smaller numbers like 3.95 mils instead of 4.05 or 3.75. At the end of the day, the difference in dollars out of a pocket by an individual household was very small at, say, 3.75 versus 4.05. And the board can only vote yes or no on things. You don't get multiple choice options. So if the options are yes or no, I was okay moving forward with the yes. I will continue to challenge the administration to make sure that those tax dollars that we are awarded are being spent in the best way possible, but I do understand the ask. So then the next piece was about when we would ask for the bond. The truth is, this has been on the radar for a while, as Mr. Peterson mentioned. We could have gone after the bond last November, but it felt rushed. So the administration explored waiting and May was the last election opportunity before this wouldn't be able to be billed as a no-tax increase proposition. Now, this is semantics. Any tax that you pay, when you don't technically have to pay a tax, isn't free. It's technically a tax increase over zero. But again, I get it. If we don't ask for this in May, or if this doesn't pass in May, the current mileage rate will roll back and the community will feel some tax relief. And that relief is not nothing. As I know, you know, saving hundreds of dollars, which is what it would be for an average household, can be significant and is significant in this current economy. But this is about more than tax savings. Without a bond, we will have a hard time right sizing the district without dipping into the general fund. We'll have a hard time adding CTE programming or improving the fiber optic network without dipping into the general fund. And every dollar that's taken out of the general fund is, you know, that's spent on capital improvements is a dollar that can't be spent on teacher salaries and operational expenses. So again, the board doesn't get multiple choice votes for which date is preferred. We just get to vote yes or no on a date. So then, I looked more into the implications of what a May vote really meant, especially in a year when there's already three elections and this would be a fourth election. And then we've got all the new laws on top of it, early voting and frankly, a lot of unknowns. So I was concerned about how the clerks from all of our municipalities would feel about our district with this surprise sprung on them. So I asked Dr. Bernia to at least give them a heads up, which he did, and I thank him for that, as I think our municipal partnerships are rather important. I know the clerks are still concerned. They're not thrilled, as they should be, since this is going to be a hard year for them. But I'm glad they at least have a little bit of a heads up. Dr. Bernia also took the opportunity, when he let them know about the bond, to find out how much this is going to cost. The truth is, the clerks have no idea. We don't know because this is a new environment. Everything costs more today than it did during our last special election in 2019. And that didn't have nine days of early voting. And some clerks' estimates have been small, you know, $3,000 for a tiny little city. Other clerks' estimates have been very high, some as high as $100,000 for just that one city. And we touch, I believe it's nine municipalities. So on balance, even if a special election costs us a couple hundred thousand dollars, that can be paid through the interest earned on the bond. And really, I look at it as an application fee. If I put it in terms of a regular household, if your household decided that you wanted to go after a home equity line of credit, $50,000, you might pay a $150 application fee for that line of credit and you wouldn't bat an eye. It's just the bank's fee. Well, if you look at what we're doing and the potential cost of this election, you add a few zeros to a $150 application fee or a $50,000 line of credit, you're really not talking about a huge percentage of the loan or the bond, in this case, that you're going after. So I recognize that this is a cost of doing business. So I say all of this to assure everybody in the community that I've heard the questions, I've heard the doubts, and I have taken the time to look into all of the answers that I could. I'm satisfied with those answers. As I said earlier, I am going to vote tonight to support putting this bond on the May ballot. And ultimately, that will leave the decision about passing the bond up to the voters. Thank you.
Do we have any additional comments? Mrs. Fernandez?
Thank you. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into the bond. I also recognize that bonds are critical means for funding many of the things that we need as a large district to have. I have greatly appreciated Shayna's digging into some of the questions that we all hear from the public. I wanted to just add a perspective on the process that we've gone through and generally express a bit of disappointment. While it's tremendous amounts of effort and it involves a lot of time that we've put in and particularly, Dr. Bernia and his staff have put in, there have been a few items to me that are challenging. Shayna mentioned the amount and that we did consider some additional amounts and, you know, the relative volume of impact that that made. But at the time that we were asking for the amounts, you know, we really didn't have adequate detail to support why we were asking for what ended up being, you know, kind of a replacement that is maybe more easily marketed as a no increase fee to the public. And so that, to me, was unsatisfying. We came out of those conversations with some general agreement that we would have follow-up so that we could get comfortable with the contents that were leading up to such an amount. And, you know, timing has not been our friend in this particular effort, no matter how long it's taken. And that follow-up and ability to discuss how we were getting to the amount we were getting did not happen. And, you know, there was some effort to do, maybe some individual outreach, but to me, it's unsatisfying and disappointing not to be able to have the benefit of speaking as a board, as a collective group, in making such weighty and important decisions on behalf of the district. So from a process perspective, you know, the discussion and engagement that we've had, despite the tons of effort that's been put into getting us here, has not been adequate from my personal point of view. I would like to see, have seen more of that. And I think in tonight's meeting, you can see very clearly what happens after we have approved bond funds. I mean, we've just gone through a list of seven today. And, you know, there's, well, we can only vote yes or no on the bond and putting it up, you know, getting it onto the ballot. We can likewise only vote yes or no on these things as they come up and they're generally positioned as it's already in the bond, it's already in the bond. And so that might leave a bad taste in folks' mouths if a person or individuals decide to vote no on these individual line items. But quite truthfully, you know, that's where the scrutiny now will lie in the future, is on individual items that come forward that we maybe could have discussed a little bit more if we had been able to do that in advance. What I'd like to do on this process bit is just to ask our president, Mr. Peterson, and others who might be making commentary, to kind of go on the record, supporting oversight and scrutiny as we move forward with the bond, because I think that's important and it will merit a little bit more than yes and no line item votes for the next, in perpetuity. So, you know, I think that would be a positive thing for us to do. And I would ask that we consider having a subcommittee or some structure in place that will, will ensure that there is enough scrutiny and enough individual oversight for such a weighty and important amount on behalf of our district. In the end, I also will be voting yes, and that is because I believe that the voters ultimately need to decide for or against the bond in May. And as I've said, you know, I totally recognize that bond funding is important. I might have liked, like with the sinking fund, a little bit more deliberation around what the right amount is and what we really need. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Cosgranti.
So I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what Mrs. Levin and Mrs. Fernandez have said, but I want to kind of compliment it. So one of the things that, that we hear from our community and public, and we've discussed here, is, you know, where do we get our funding from? And the per pupil funding, and if you look at the School of Research Collaborative, the Finance Research Collaborative, we don't have enough money coming per pupil to be able to pay for the other items. That is a piece that Mrs. Levin hit on. If you want more information, that study is really good. It's really long, but there is good information there that shows you how schools are funded and how we still don't even have the right amount of per pupil funding. And that doesn't even take into account all the things we need to do to keep the district buildings, et cetera, in, in good order. Yes, we have a sinking fund. I want to touch on that a little bit, but the sinking fund is limited to certain parameters and a box of things we can and cannot spend money on. And then it also is a smaller amount. It's nothing like, like this kind of bond that we're going to take to the public for a vote. The notification, you know, for the clerks, I just wanted to point out, and I had actually talked to Dr. Bernia about this, that before he even went and, and talked to the clerks, that I had received information from the township where I am within the Wild Lake boundaries, and they had already put out that there was going to be potentially a May election. So they knew, they knew that there could potentially be. They always have to plan for that. Now, does it always come to fruition? No. But they know they have to plan for it. But I do appreciate the fact that we're having communication and, and that we're trying to do the right thing there to make sure that they know that this is what's going on here at our meeting. The last thing I wanted to talk about is the, the oversight and continuing. So I think we, we have a, a fine line there. And so, yes, absolutely, we need to keep, you know, talking about that. One of the things that Mr. Peterson and I have talked about, and I've also talked to Dr. Bernia about this before, is you could have an integrator who could come and talk to how you talked to Mrs. Fernandez about a subcommittee. It would be an ad hoc committee. It would, it wouldn't be a standing committee, but it would be something where you would have up to three people and you could rotate that. You could put it in place for a period of time, then you could, you know, stop it. Then you could put it in place and you could stop it for certain specific things. And, and that would probably be a good idea. And I know that Dr. Bernia is in favor of that as well, to make sure that we have good communication. Because quite frankly, we don't have people on the board right now who have been through some of this. Sometimes it's the first time that somebody sitting in the board seat has done this. And when you have a board that doesn't have as much experience in that, you know, it's good to have further conversation. And I think that that's good. So I agree with you that maybe having an ad hoc committee doing that for that specific purpose makes sense. And I too am in support of the bond. Thank you.
Mr. Seigler?
When you look at the FSRC, the initial findings basically said if we added in transportation, if we added in special ed funding and a lot of other areas that we were not receiving full funding on, we would be, our school funding should be approximately $12,500 per pupil, which we know we've never seen and we probably unfortunately, never will. And that was, you know, but that was what they were saying we needed per pupil, and that was several years ago. Number one. Number two, when you look at the facilities study that was done prior to the last election, the amount that they recommended that the district spend was in excess, and Mr. Chatfield, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in excess of over $600 million. We went to the public for considerably less. Well, when we get our next facility study, they're going to come back again and they're going to tell us, we need to spend X amount more to do upgrades, do improvements, and maintain the buildings in a manner that is safe and conducive for proper education. With the amount that we're coming in right now, it still does not fill the gap of what was recommended from the last research, from the last facility study. This has been ongoing in this district for, prior to Mr. Chatfield coming in or anybody else sitting at this table, that we... prior to Mr. Chatfield coming in or anybody else sitting at this table, that we have made it through. Sometimes we have made it through by the skin of our teeth. Sometime, there was a time when our fund balance in this district was close to $26 million. But we've lost a lot. The economy has taken a lot from us. General tax structures and revision of tax structures have taken it away from us heavily, has taken it away from us. Losing something as simple as 20J, which amounted to approximately $4.5 million a year that we lost, has taken it away from us. But thankfully, our community has been there to support what we want to do and what we need to do to educate our children, and I have to say thank you for that.
Do we have any additional comments?
I would like to make a comment. So when you look at this and where we have arrived, I really ask everyone, first of all, to understand the perimeters of Wall Lake Consolidated School District. So number one, we're north of $160 million a year annual budget. We have well over 1,200 employees. We have 22 schools at present. We have a very large geographical area. And secondarily, unfortunately, we are a consolidated school district, so that thus means we have to go to multiple communities to have a election. So we are penalized to that degree. If we were just a Wall Lake school in Wall Lake, we would have one election and one fee. So there are pros and cons that way. But it's very important that all of you track, and a lot of you are here, have been through these meetings this last year, and have listened to Plant Moran provide the data as it's come into the district. We've had the reports from Dr. Bernia on the Facilities Committee work in line with what thought that data was showing us. And it's a stark contrast. The district was originally, probably at this point, footprint-wise, based on 17,000, 18,000 kids. But frankly, we're at about 12,000 and something and moving all the time. I never get that number exactly. So that's, you know, that's concerning, but we're no different than any other district in all of North America. So from that standpoint. The other side of that is that I think the Facilities Committee recognized that to further and grow Wall Lake schools, we had to find how to repurpose those potential buildings in some cases and allow us to access some additional programming for our kids overall, which is really one of the big benefits. One of the things that I don't know if you all remember, that they came back almost resoundingly, both from the surveys through parents and the kids, and through the committee work, was that they wanted, they were 98% in favor of enhancements to the CTE programs throughout the entire district. That's overwhelming. That's just not marginal. That's overwhelming. We still have, you know, this building at some point in this bond, if it does move forward, will go away. The administrative will be moving to potentially another building. We still have these open issues on our, you know, transitions program. Where do they fit? And how do we find them a permanent home? That, quite frankly, 25 years from now, they can call, this is their home. And so there are other things that are a byproduct of the bond. We're not absolutely there yet. We still have a couple more hurdles to get. I know we're poised as a board, we've had this communication since I came on board as President this year, that we would automatically, kind of, if the bond does pass in the spring, that we would transition to a first of its kind, I think, in this district, a committee that strictly is an oversight on the bond itself. We will position right to that right away. That will give us some insight and some collaborative efforts with everyone involved in this going forward. This will not end. It will not end there. We will, I think there's a commitment by Dr. Bernie and the administration. I know there's a commitment by this board to make sure that everyone that's here and abroad is available in this process. The Facility Study Committee will not go away. They are not done yet. They just don't know what that final, or final meetings are going to look like yet, because we haven't been able to present that, what that option's going to be. So is it this in window A or is it this in window B? We don't know that. But they are poised to obviously move once we have a clearer picture going forward. So that being said, as we move forward into the next agenda item, what we'll take and go through our board, our actual count, vote count, is the strategic planning, and that does, that coincides with this at the same time. So we'll talk about that a little bit more when we move on. So do we have any additional comments at this point? So, Ms. Sobel, I would like to roll call, vote please.
Yes, Mrs. Casgrande.
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Siegler?
Yes.
Ms. Teis?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes. The board count is 6-0. The motion has passed. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is strategic planning. The way we have it structured here is, again, I will give you some basic background on how we got to this and what is strategic planning. So most of you are probably aware that you see somewhere on the website, or you've seen somewhere on a piece of paper, somewhere, you see a mission statement and you see a vision statement. And then somewhere kind of hidden in there sometimes is the strategic plan, which is generally a three, five-year kind of window on where the district is going. And so the strategic plan in this district, we were very clear as the Facility Study began to conclude in the fall of last year, that going forward, that we had not done much work in this area. So I asked Dr. Bernie to please look a little deeper into this, and at best he could find is that the last major attempt at a strategic plan or a planning study work was somewhere in the Dr. Geisler era. It had been probably massaged a few times in a minor way. And that's quite a long time. Obviously, the district has transformed a lot in many different ways, and maybe that whole plan and that whole vision isn't in tune. So it was time. It's a process that we, as a board, engaged in a workshop last fall at the end of the year on strategic planning, and we got more insight as to what that entails. It is not, okay, we're going to just change a few words and off we go. It's a much, if you engage in that process in full-heartedly, it's a much bigger process. It's very similar in a lot of ways to how the Facility Study operated. So in other words, we would look to and we solicited those few companies that are consultants in this area to assist the board, because it's a process that, you know, starts out with, you know, first contacting everyone in the district through surveys and follow-ups in these areas to get, solicit their information and feedback. That's a process. That takes time. It's demanding to get to that point. Then, most of these consulting companies have a series of smaller group interactions. That takes time. Again, soliciting and trying to get feedback in how do we format and how do we find a funnel as to where that strategic plan will ultimately end. And so that takes time. Best-case scenario for us even at this point, and then ultimately, they'll have one large community meeting-type retreat concept, similar to what happened within the Facility Study Committee, or has been engaged in throughout this last year. And then ultimately, there will be some recommendations that will come back to the board for obviously oversight and approval. This process will not be extremely fast. I guess our best adjustment might be, at this point, maybe the early part of the fall conclusion. Does that sound reasonable? From what I have learned, that is reasonable. So it's important to understand that part of what drives a school district like this is all those factors. Sometimes we take it, you know, we just take them for granted. This is what's on the floor, what's on the little rug. Sometimes we don't realize how they impact and how they impact our teachers, our curriculum, our mindset, our kids, our drive. These things are all part of it. So it is, at this point, probably a necessary entity. Quite frankly, we want it to have happened. It's just, I think, a byproduct of that facility planning more than anything else. So for further ado, is there any comment from within the board?
Would you, yeah, I was going to say, would you like a motion so we can then speak to it?
Yeah, we'll do the motion. Thank you.
Mrs. Levin, did you want to do that?
I do.
Yeah.
I moved that the Board of Education approved GND associates to conduct and oversee the strategic planning process and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract and remit payment.
Support.
Do we have any additional comment? Mrs. Levin?
So I'm very glad that we are taking this step to move forward in this process. At some point last year, it became clear, you know, as I was newer on the board, that there wasn't a lot of direction with things with the district. Everything was, you know, we have to solve this problem, so let's solve that problem. And we have to do this thing, and let's do that thing. But there weren't goals. And I think that any organization needs goals, whether you are a high school baseball team and you have a goal to win your division, or you are a company and you have a goal to be a Forbes number one place to work, or you are a school district, you need to have a goal. And those goals need to be defined. They need to be measurable. They need to be relevant, smart goals. So I'm pleased that the board has taken the time to explore this. I'm hopeful and optimistic that the board will continue to spend the time that we know is coming to go through this process. And I'm most excited to see the outcome of where we land, because that will point us and Dr. Bernia in a direction that I think is very badly needed for this district and will help us in all of our future decisions. I'm looking forward to being able to, you know, see an agenda item and be able to point to it and say, this goes to goal number whatever. And this is why I support it, or this doesn't really go with any of our goals, and I don't support it. And to really be able to fall back on what we establish as a board and as a community, I think will lend to the accountability, the transparency, and the trust that, you know, we need in this district. And so I'm very much in favor of this.
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Casgrande.
So I'd like to just piggyback a little bit on some of what you said, Mrs. Levin. So I think there were goals, but they were stale. And in my mind, goals, strategic planning, you have to live it. It's like, okay, you can do a risk assessment, but if you just do it and it sits there, and it isn't something that, as you mentioned, you're saying, okay, we're doing this, how does this fit into the big picture? Then it's really hard to understand how you're moving forward. And so I absolutely agree that we need to have goals and a strategic plan that helps us understand what is that big picture, and then how do we bring that down to what those little pieces of execution are that we then would bring to our superintendent to execute on our behalf. But we need to be able to have something that is our driving force. And it needs to be something that we talk about, and we don't just talk about it every, you know, 10 years or so. So history-wise, when Dr. Geisler was here, when I was not on the board, I was part of strategic planning. But again, that's stale, right? That's a long time ago that we did that. So I agree. The other thing that we've been, we had been looking at, we looked at MASP, we looked at GND associates. And initially, you know, I think some of the board, most of the board was thinking, well, we had MASP come out, and they did some training for us, and they offered this service. And I think it was Mrs. Fernandez who said, I'd really like to see GND, and I agreed with her. I'd like to see that. I'd like to be able to see what they offer as well. Sometimes it's just when you listen to a presentation or people come and talk with you, you get a feel for. And one of the things that I really appreciated about GND, and I called Dr. Bernie and talked to him afterwards and told him I absolutely would like us to, you know, consider GND, because they'll even offer additional services to help and support Dr. Bernia on some other items as well. And I absolutely appreciate a lot of what MASP does, but I just really felt that the GND presentation and the questions we asked and the follow-up and how they approach it is just going to be a little bit better fit for us, and I think it's going to give us a little bit better service. So I do support this, and I do support GND being our consultant. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I do have one follow-up comment. And I would just make a point that I think that as the Facility Studies ran through their course last year, I think the website here in the district kind of milestoneed every one of them along. And I would assume, I haven't conferred with Dr. Bernie 100% on that, but I would assume that we will have milestones and placements on the website as the strategic plan moves forward. So no other comments, then we'll move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion passed 6-0.
Yes. I was just going to say, yes.
So the next board, next agenda item.
You were going, and I, you don't interrupt the board president, right? He's the boss. No, I did want to comment and just say to that point, now that you have voted in favor of both of these things, the community will receive a letter from me tomorrow directing them as to where they can ask questions. And we definitely will have pieces of our website for the bond for strategic planning and then for the continuation of our Facility Study. So you can look for it right there. I want to congratulate the six of you, though, on working together and taking a major step forward for the district.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Ms. Casgrande.
I just want to just add to that even though Mrs. Kaplan isn't here today, I know she fully supports both of these initiatives. And so I just, for whatever it's worth, I think we have, if Mrs. Kaplan was sitting here today, she could make the meeting today, but she would absolutely be sitting here supporting it as well.
Okay. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is board policy adaption, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board Policy Committee submitted a updated set of policies to the board at our meeting on January 11th for the first reading. Tonight is the second reading of the policies. You've had a month to review them. And so this is the meeting where you take the vote, and then we update our policy book from there.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Siegler?
I move the Board of Education to adopt the updated board policy.
Support.
Do we have any conversation?
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Levin?
First, I just want to thank the Policy Committee for the work that they've been doing. They've met more than I have meetings at my own job. And they have jobs they also do. So it is not a small task to do this. I want to give the community a little transparency about exactly what we've been doing with all these policies. And I think this has come up before, just a reminder. Like, we have been very far behind with legal updates to already existing policies. So the Policy Committee has been meeting to just get us caught up with the recommendations from our attorneys, just to bring things up to speed. So these aren't new policies. These aren't drastically changing any things. They're just being brought up to speed. I believe that the Policy Committee will tackle more things in the future, but what we've been doing, and I believe this might not even be the culmination, this might be, we're only, we're almost caught up, but there's still a lot more to get through. The hope is that we don't do this again and fall behind, but we have to get caught up in order to get moving forward. So that's all.
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Casgrande.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off on that, so this is legal updates since like 2020-ish. So when we had this little thing called a pandemic that kind of took over some of the items and things that we were working on, trying to keep our staff safe and having protocols and a lot of conversations across the district and the community. And back in 2020, we had gone through, and I was part of the Policy Committee at that point, and Mrs. Dunn and Mrs. Van Loon were as well. And we met just like this as well. I mean, we had huge amounts of information, met with Superintendent Gutman at the time, and brought in, you know, a lot of his cabinet, depending on what we were talking about. And it does take time to do this. And so, but if, again, if you don't live policy, that's another thing that we are absolutely responsible for here. We hire a superintendent, we're responsible for policy. So I do appreciate the work as well, and I understand how much time it takes to talk through it. So thank you.
Do we have any additional comments?
I'll make one quick. As a board member that is part of the Bylaw Committee, I have to commend Mrs. Fernandez and Mrs. Kaplan, who is not here tonight. I'll also pat the back on Mr. Peterson a little bit. Mr. Bernia's been just excellent, and obviously, Ms. Sobel is. Mr. Bernia's been just excellent, and obviously, Ms. Sobel has tried to follow us at best at times. The conversations do go abroad at times. We don't always resolve something in a single sitting, or maybe sometimes multiply. We do have a lot of policy adjustments that have come before us. A part of it is, I think, just changes in law and the state of Michigan that facilitates that urge, and, and just so that everyone is aware that following this part, as far as on the agenda item, then these move into, Dr. Bernia has to formulate an administrative rec, which is really how to take that bylaw and put it into a day-to-day operating guideline. So, but I do commend them all for their work, and we are, but sure not done, and I do perceive that in the well-immediate future, that it'll be a, an ongoing process. So, at that point, do we have any additional comments? So, do we have a motion?
We have it.
We already did.
Yep, we do. So, then we'll go for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes 6-0. Next item on our agenda is board policy administrative regulations updates, and I will turn that over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Peterson just pointed out, our administrative regulations are how we make our policies actually happen in our buildings and across our district. So, this does not require a vote from the board, but we are updating our fees, deposits, fines, and charges to reflect the 24-25 preschool program fees. We have a field trip consent form update. Our central office administrators and building administrators, we update this as we transition, so we've had some, we've had some new hires, so that's an update to that. We saw a series of laws that folks have probably seen on the news as it relates to teacher evaluation. All of those administrative regulations have been updated. And lastly, with the support of the committee and with the leadership of Dr. Lons, we did some work on our threat assessment and suicide protocols, and that has been updated as well. So, again, this does not require your vote this evening, but I do appreciate the support and the hard work of the Policy Committee. We're meeting again tomorrow. We met on one of the snow days. It's a dedicated group, and I appreciate their partnership.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is resolution, MAS Board of Directors election for Region 8. The Michigan Association of School Boards, MASP, requests that the Wall Lake School Board of Education officially select one candidate from the MS, for the MAS Board of Directors, Region 8, three-year term. The candidates are as follows. Melendia Hines, she's from Wayne Westland Community Schools in Wayne County. Brigitte McQuiston, Lake Orient Community Schools, Oakland County, she is an incumbent. And third person is Evelyn Pridemore, Redford Union School District out of Wayne County. So, we'll move for a motion.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Siegler.
I move the board, I move the Wall Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education choose Brigitte McQuiston to serve on the MASP Board of Directors for Region 8.
Support.
Do we have any conversation?
Yep, Mr. Peterson.
Mrs. Casagrande.
I just wanted to note that Brigitte's name is misspelled here. If we could just make sure we get it correct, it is B-I-R-G-I-T. So, I want to make sure that that is, that is correct. And I also just wanted to mention that we've worked with Brigitte on and off, and one of the things I appreciate about her is that she has passion, that she's, she's also working with the Oakland County School Board Association County Board, and, I don't know, very organized, very dedicated, and I know, Mr. Siegler, you've worked with her a lot more than I have, but I've known her on and off for years, and I, I don't think we would vote for her just because she's the incumbent. I also want to say that I have, I have seen her do some good work and pose some good questions, and she is one of them that is in it to support public education and to make sure that we all get the information we need to make decisions. Thank you.
Do we have any additional comments?
I, I wanted to add is some context. I was fortunate, Brigitte McQuiston's son was, attended my school when I was a principal. She was one of my parents, and I would echo what you just said, that she is so dedicated to the community and to board service, and I can't say enough good things about Mrs. McQuiston and the job she does as a board member. I truly admire her and, and her advocacy.
Do we have any additional comments? Can we move for a vote, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 6-0, and Mrs. McQuiston is our candidate. And our last agenda item is Oakland County School Board Association OS, OCSBA dinner meeting. Yes.
Oh, before you, before the board votes and before the, anyone declares whether or not they want to go, in your board materials tomorrow, you will see that March 6th, we, we have three events that evening. So, we have the OCSBA dinner, we have an art recognition award here at the ESC, and then our partners at Hospitality House are having their spring fundraiser. And so, my cabinet and I, we've parsed this out to make sure that administratively we're represented at all the events, but as you're considering what you want to do that evening, I, I would hate for somebody to say they want to go to the OCSBA dinner, we register you, and then you find out there's an art award tomorrow when you get your board materials. So, I just wanted to point that out before you make your decisions.
Mr. Siegler.
Yes, I would.
Did you like to make a motion?
Wolf wants to go, anybody?
Yes, do we know.
Are you going to go?
Yes, I'm going to go.
I move the Board of Education approve the attendance of Mr. Peterson and Mr. Siegler at the Oakland County School Boards Association Dinner Meeting on Wednesday, March 6, 2024, and authorize payment of the registration fee.
Support.
Do we have any additional comments? I do. The reason I stood up and chose this one right away, this is at OSTC facility, which is the Pontiac, Auburn Hills, which is, I think, the newest of all the, the multiple schools, vocational schools in the county. I've been there before for our welding advisory board meeting. It's an exclusive facility, number one, so anytime I always get the opportunity to go there, I would choose that. So, those of you that do have the opportunity and have made up your mind that, and one of these other areas are not contrasting for you, that in itself, it is not like going to Oakland schools. It's a much different, much different and deeper function. So, I'll leave it at that, and if we don't have any additional comments.
Mr. Peterson, I do have one comment.
Yes, Ms.
I have a question. So, I don't know if we have checked with Mrs. Kaplan to see whether or not she wanted to attend or not, and I wondered if maybe we should amend the motion and add her to it just in case she wants to, and then if she doesn't want to go, at least we've approved it, so we don't have to come back and approve something. I don't know, you think about that? Because I don't know her intention, and, and I would at least rather approve the expense in case she wants to go.
And I was with her at the last meeting, and she did not mention it one way or the other to me at that time. And I realize that even for us, it's, our meeting is actually the seventh, so this actually is the day before, so.
Do you want to make a motion?
And then we can vote.
Sure. Yeah, I, I would just ask that we amend the motion to also include Mrs. Kaplan to the, to the fees and approve the fees.
Support.
Any additional comments? And we'll take a vote, please. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that brings us to a light-handed adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your attendance.